One nation, under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow, bustling audience tonight. We are not expecting the other two members, so we have a quorum and we have just opened our meeting. Is there any public comment? No. Okay, we'll move right into Butterfly Lane subdivision closeout layout hearing report.
So at the last meeting, Mr. Crowley was here and we had an initial, excuse me, an initial site visit and investigation and letter from Mr. Walsh at Graves Engineering. There were, what, eight or so, maybe 10 issues that were minor things that needed to be done. Mr. Walsh and I were out there this morning with Mr. Crowley. All of the items have been completed to the satisfaction of the review engineer. Everything looks good out there. There were a couple of trees, excuse me, that were replaced that didn't need to be replaced but were a little rough looking, so Mr. Crowley went ahead and replaced them. So everything looks really nice out there. All the manholes have been vacuumed out, all the catch basins have been vacued out, so it's all buttoned up. I did speak with the water district, that was a question that came up. They have no issues, they've signed off on the project. The conservation commission has not issued a final COC, but they expect to within the next week or two. All of their issues are resolved, they just need to have a meeting to issue that final COC, which doesn't impact your process, but it is a note in the letter and more just a housekeeping item.
So certificate of compliance?
Correct.
And that would have no impact on closing out at all?
Not from your perspective, because the, whatever items are joint, we've identified as being completed, so if there was something from a conservation perspective that still needed to be done or was questionable, they would handle through their process.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
No? Well, thank you for replacing the trees that didn't need to be replaced.
Hey, no problem. They were like half-dead. They probably, I mean, Adam and I and Jeff looked at them and they could have been trimmed, but we were adding four, as you could see, so I just replaced four at the same time.
Good, good, thank you.
So what action is needed?
So you would need to vote to release the bond. The town is still holding a paper bond for the completion of the work, and upon the work being done, you would vote to release that.
Okay. And there's nothing outstanding as far as we're concerned?
There is not.
Okay, I would make a motion to release the bond for Butterfly Lane.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
You as well.
Thanks, Chris. And then to follow up on that, while we're in this headspace, I would ask that the board make a report to the board of selectmen for their layout hearing, per their request from the last meeting. Your report would be essentially that you have closed out the subdivision and released their bond and that they have completed the work to the satisfaction of the board per the approval.
So would that be a matter of us telling you?
Yeah, you would make a motion, I'd just write a quick memo to the selectmen saying that the planning board makes the report that this is what they've done. And then the selectmen-
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for that, Adam.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, so I'm pretty sure, did we end off waiting to sign off on the earth removal for Paula's input?
That was the last thing we were waiting for, was the quantities discussion.
So we were split two and two on 500 versus 1,000.
Okay.
And seemingly you would be the tiebreaker.
Well-
But as we've, as is true, nothing is permanently binding, because it always can be changed at the next town meeting.
Right.
And as well, if we put it forth, it can be amended on the floor.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. As I've stated, I'm in favor of the 500.
Okay, and Adam tells me that it was submitted with the 1,000.
It is with the 1,000.
It is, and I was under the impression that the three who were in attendance last time were in agreement that 1,000 was reasonably appropriate and that you wanted to wait for Paula to be here to have a discussion if there was one to be had about changing it.
That's right, it was only three. So, I mean, I would leave it up to that body, the town meeting body, and let it go as submitted. Would be my recommendation. Does anybody feel strongly?
Where did we end up in terms of the verbiage with filling and removing? In other words, is the 1,000, could you theoretically reach the 1,000 yards by removing 500 and bringing 500?
No. The language, I think we had that discussion and it came down on the side of them being two separate things, and the, one is a removal permit, one is a fill permit, and that the, trying to tuck the two together was, I think we had a discussion about that, I don't think there was a firm, we should roll them together, that it was, let's leave it separate for now.
I just want to make sure we were clear, so if there's a discussion at town meeting-
Correct. That was my understanding, because generally they're two separate processes, it's not often, I mean, I know people remove stuff and bring stuff in, but of that quantity, you're not generally pulling 500 out and putting 500 in, you're, you know, and these are usually happening with operations that are removing earth for a, for sale. You know, they're buying a parcel to, and you, I mean, we all know this.
Or they have some other work there. I mean, the classic case I look at is, okay, somebody wants to expand a parking area.
Yes, and they-
And they're going to be subject to site plan review for the paving portion anyway.
Correct, but they don't need a building permit, so they don't trigger that other exemption.
I'm fine with the way it is, I think it's a vast improvement over what we've got now, and especially seeing as how we currently don't provide any sort of regulations for the filling activity, so.
And I think, you know, in reading this, the rules and regulations are where we would be looking for comment from operators, because they're more on the details of how things happen and this is just what you're going to regulate. I did speak to Mr. Griffey, it's not in the bylaws, it's a regulation thing, we talked about how do you measure groundwater at bedrock, and he said, "You don't." He said essentially what you, what he, he said you could either write a specific section for quarries, which, I mean, we can talk about doing that, I don't know that we'll have a ton of people running in here to quarry rock, or what I was envisioning is that would be a place where waivers would be reasonable for the groundwater testing requirements based on the nature of what they're doing. I mean, if someone comes and says, "Oh, I just want to strip everything down to the bedrock and then go away," that's a different conversation than, "We're going to dig a 200-foot hole here and blast it out for the next 200 years."
Now, what happened with the determination of groundwater, because there were sections in the-
That's in the regulations.
It's in the regulations, have you addressed that yet, or?
We have not addressed that yet.
Okay.
In speaking with Mr. Griffey, he did review it, and there was only one section that he looked at that he said, "Oh, I might suggest a change in language here," he said, "But the rest of it looked like what he would expect to see."
Okay.
And he gave me some language that we can talk about as we move further on.
Okay.
As we move further on?
Well, after, if this passes, we have to do the regulations.
Okay.
And there are separate documents, so-
Yes, yes, agreed. So what kind of action you look, we just need to move to approve it?
You just need to say, "We're good with this," and I'll just let the town manager know that the draft that she has is what the board wants in the warrant.
Okay, I think Tanner said that, I'm good with it.
I'd like to see the 500, so.
Well, that, at this point, that's something that's going to occur at town meeting anyhow, because-
Well, no, it hasn't been published yet.
It has not been published yet.
Okay.
But the deadline is tomorrow, because the hearing is Thursday with the finance committee.
All right.
So I was also in favor of 500, but I'm not sure. Is there available time to change the 1,000 to 500 for the printing?
Yeah, if I let the town manager know in the morning, that can be changed.
Okay.
I'm in favor of the 500 to go from 10 to 1,000, and I've listened to Tanner's explanations and I understand them, but I feel that 500 is adequate, and as was stated, I think it can be changed on the floor. If permit holders feel strongly, it should be 1,000, or if members of the public feel strongly, it should be 1,000, but I'd rather go in with a more conservative number than the biggest number.
And I would as well. And you are more than welcome to take up the mic at the podium, at the town meeting.
Yeah, well, I mean, it is what it is. At our last meeting, we were three to one, the other way, this meeting, we have different people at the table, so 500 it is.
Yep.
So there's a consensus that 500 is what the board will?
I'm not in favor of-
How could it have been three to one?
No, it was, it was three in favor and you weren't here.
Okay, okay, so it was three.
I think we were well aware that your position was.
Okay.
I was in favor of the 500.
So I-
Did I say 1,000 last time?
Well, that's what we put forward, I guess.
Okay, yeah, no, I mean, it didn't matter to me because of the, because of the ability to be amended on the floor. So, yeah.
I don't like the floor amendment process, I think if we put something forward, we stay behind it. I'm not in favor of any position, and I have the same stance with the marijuana stuff. If you're going to put something on the warrant, that should be exactly what you're going to support. You shouldn't put something, lob it out there and then say, "Oh, we reconsidered." Like, it is what you want, or it is not.
Sure, but we're made up of individuals and we don't necessarily agree on it, so it is put forth and-
But, but what I'm saying is, as a board, you make a decision, you say it's 1,000 or you say it's 500. If I'm outvoted, I'm outvoted, I'm not going to go to town meeting floor and undermine this board's position with my own amendment. That, to me, circumvents the whole process. I'm a member of a board, but I'm an individual as well, but I'm not going to go to town meeting as an individual and undermine the work of my own board.
Oh, good, good. Nor am I. Very good.
So 500?
That's the consensus right now. So the next thing is the economic development, economic development committee, continued discussion. So the last meeting, we, I think the only thing we changed was the makeup, rather than a member, it was an appointment by the group?
Uh, yeah, there was some, and, well, I mean, what you have in your packet is the red line from the last time. So, I mean, the big change was, instead of members of agricultural open space and conservation, it was recommended by, and the two residents were just residents at large, they didn't need to be a business owner or a property owner, they just needed to be residents at large.
So what was the rationale behind eliminating the business owner requirement?
The discussion, as I recall it, was that finding a Lunenburg resident and business owner may narrow the pool of candidates down and may eliminate the possibility of filling the seat due to people being unwilling to come forward. The board discussed a desire and potentially elevating someone who was a business owner and a resident in this election process, but by requiring that, it may limit it.
But I think the wording said one member that is, so what if we just said, because I'd like to see a business owner, what if we put one member that is a Lunenburg business owner?
Well, there isn't, in the second section, there's four ex officio members who don't vote.
Okay.
So there is the opportunity for a business owner-
Okay.
-to be on the group, and by doing it in that manner, you open it up to potentially a business owner who's not a Lunenburg resident-
Right.
-who has as much stake in the success of that group as a resident would. So you get two resident perspectives and you would get a, well, I mean, you get five resident perspectives, but you get two resident-at-large perspectives and a business owner who may or may not reside in the community, but has a business here.
Okay.
And we talked about the ex officio members not having the power to vote.
Right.
So the selectmen and the planning board are there as part of the discussion and observing, but not, not being part of the decision-making process.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not, it's not, it's not set in stone yet, I mean, we could have one be just a resident and one be a resident and a business owner. True?
Yes, you can.
So the agricultural commission has already discussed, you know, people that we're going to look for, and we are focusing on business owners. But we just didn't want to limit it through the verbiage of the charting of the group to exclude anybody to participate.
Mm-hmm. I'm fine with it as it's written, I read it in my packet, and I just wondered about the elimination of the business owner, I didn't pick up on the fact that there's an ex officio member. Just one comment after land use director, you should remove that period.
Yeah, it should be a semicolon.
So what's the next step on this?
You vote to adopt this charge and create the committee.
How do we feel about doing that with the three out of the five?
I would like to have all five of us, since we're adopting a committee and-
Yeah, that's fine.
I would as well.
I think it makes sense to wait till all of us are here.
We can make a final of this, take the red off.
Yeah, that's what I would prefer to-
You've got another meeting later this month.
Yeah, that's what I would prefer to do.
23rd.
Okay.
23rd?
Sounds good to me. Yeah, yeah. All right, so we will put that on the next agenda? So the solar bylaw discussion.
Again, I, you know, I think we go back to, the board has expressed concerns, reservations, desire to tighten or alter the bylaw. This is what we currently have, so I'm, I'm happy to give you a draft, my concern is giving you a draft that goes off in a direction that's not where the board wants to go with it.
Can you highlight what the concerns are, or have been expressed by the board? Because I don't, I'm not aware of them.
My understanding of the concerns to this point are probably first and foremost, the ability of a residential lot to have solar as a primary use, the scale of solar that is permitted in residential areas, the discussion or disagreement or negotiation of the buffer zone based on the language that governs the buffer zone within the bylaw for large-scale ground-mounted solar. It does set out a firm number, but then it says unless the applicant requests and the planning board approves, or something to that effect, and it doesn't give particular guidance on what criteria. It talks about things like native vegetation, and in some of these places, the native vegetation could be hay.
Right, just grass, yeah.
And, you know, 200 feet of hay provides much less screening than 50 feet of pine trees or arborvitae's or whatever.
Okay.
So those are my, what I've gleaned are the major concerns. The one thing that I have a problem with from, from a regulatory perspective is assigning limits to kilowatt-hours, because as technology has evolved over time, the footprint of a megawatt system has gone from about six acres to four to five, depending on the technology that they're using. So with systems getting smaller and limiting them based on kilowatt-hours, that might not be the easiest way to do it. We have an, we have a minimum lot size of 20 acres, and so even if you wanted to put a 50 KW system in, you would need 20 acres, because it's more than the small ground-mounted. So I think that there's an ability to create scale on how this is applied. Now, all of that becomes less necessary in some aspects if it's eliminated as a primary use in a residential neighborhood, but I still think there's a scale to it. The impact of a 10,000-square-foot footprint on a half an acre is different than on a two-acre or three-acre. I've advocated for a percentage of lot-size footprint, or something to that effect in conjunction with a buffer zone, and that, again, gives you scale for, so that the impact of the solar on whatever property it's on is equal.
Depends on the size of the property, right.
As opposed to, you know, here's your, you know, you can, you can have this system and, you know, you can put it on any of these lots, and they're, all the lots are different sizes, and it looks enormous on this one, and you're like, "Oh, I didn't even know they had solar, because that lot's so big." And I, I think that that may be a somewhat more approachable way to do it. We've had, in the five years or so I've been here, I think we've had six or seven people go to the zoning board trying to get relief from the 20-acre lot size, to varying success. I think, I think maybe half or more of them have been approved, one or two of them have been appealed, one or two of them haven't exercised that right, they've just gone with the roof-mounted, because they didn't want to go through the special permit process, so it just, I think there's a cleaner way to do it that involves less burden on people who want to exercise their right to install solar.
Okay.
Especially as an accessory. And I think all except one, and even that one gentleman was going to use it on-site but had additional to sell off. And, you know, some people, many people in town have larger houses, and 16 to 18 KW to run a house is not a, an unusual number for people to come up with. And I know Tanner, you've said that that's not allowable under unitil, but, and I-
I'm by no means an expert, I just know when we put the solar on our garage, we were limited to 10 KW, because we had single-phase power coming in.
And from our perspective, it shouldn't matter what unitil's decision is, we should allow the res, my feeling is we should allow the residents to have the opportunity to put what will operate their residence, and if that doesn't work with the power company, that's, that's something that they have to deal with separately.
Yep.
The, can you go back to when you said the ability of a residential lot to have solar as a primary use, what do you mean?
Settler solar, or the lot that we recently approved on 190 Electric. The only use on that lot is a solar generation facility.
Okay, gotcha.
So the primary use is solar. So it's, it's been my impression from the members over the years that no one has a problem if you have a big old house and you need to put in a 15 or 20 KW system to run your house, that that be allowed in a residential neighborhood if you have reasonable screening and lot size and all that. But the idea that a lot can be primarily used for solar-only with the deforestation and the other-
Well, the commercial aspect of the solar.
The commercial aspect, the visual impact, all of those things, and I think depending on who you talk to, there are different perspectives on that, but the board, I think, has fairly consistently been opposed to that use of residential land.
Okay. Thank you, because now I at least have an understanding what some of the concerns are. I know Greg had a lot of thoughts on this, has he submitted anything?
He does not.
So I'll add to that, is a lot of the discussion is about the size versus the kilowatt capacity has been under the, it's been called, talked about as nameplate capacity, so basically specifying the 10 KW versus a footprint, and nameplate capacity might stand out in your memory, because that's basically the same discussion. And I only remember actually having one applicant in front of the planning board that was under the 20, that had been approved by ZBA.
I think only one made it here.
Okay.
I know, I can think of at least two, one who chose to not do it, because he wanted it sooner than going through the special permit process, so he put 10 on the ground and he put the rest on his roof and was able to work it that way. There's another applicant who I know was denied, and there's one who was approved and a neighbor appealed, so he took advantage of the roof-mounted, which he could do. He happened to have a secondary structure that he was able to use, and said, "You know what, I don't even want to fight, so I'm just going to do it this way."
I mean, just from my time on the board, I think the biggest thing that we've come up against is some variation on screening. And I, if I recall correctly, Adam, you were going to look into some language that would tighten that up in terms of, like, planting spacing and stuff like that.
Yeah, and I mean, I have some thoughts on how we could do that, and being prescriptive rather than performance, and saying, "You do this many plants per this many linear feet, and you have to do it within a spacing of this." You know, I said that, and I didn't get a lot of feedback at that meeting, and nobody's really followed up, so I haven't put a lot of energy into it to avoid creating a bunch of stuff that you guys look at and say, "Well, this is dumb, why did you do this?"
Yeah, but I think that would help clarify-
And I think that's really, I think the screening is, from, from what I see and hear, screening is really the heart of the solar issue, and it's, I think, exacerbated by the presence in residential neighborhoods, and I think that's a discussion the board has to have, is do we want to allow it to continue as a primary use, or are we of that feeling that has been expressed, that it shouldn't be primary in a residential area?
No. Question in my mind now is, are we able to outlaw it in, as a primary use in residential areas?
I can check on that, and that's clearly something that would get done through that process, but I believe that you are.
So if we weren't, then that's a moot point, right?
Correct. But you're not prohibiting it in the residential, you're prohibiting it as primary.
Primary, right.
Right, but-
The solar overlay district that's referred to?
Yes.
What, those are specific properties?
It's three properties, yes.
How was that, those are three existing solar?
No.
No, so why?
It's two town-owned properties and a water district property.
And I think that was formed in 2006?
I think, yeah, I, that predates me, and I've never gotten, I've heard, I've talked to about three or four different people, and I have gotten about 12 different answers why they chose that.
And are these residential areas?
They are.
Well, I think we've got to really talk about that, then. I mean, we can't exempt ourselves from the regulations, in my opinion.
Correct. Well, we can.
Well, we can, but I have a real fundamental problem with it.
I was just saying, there's a difference between we can and should.
And whether or not it's the right approach.
Just because we can do something is, should we do something?
Well, the town's exempt from zoning, so.
Right. In some ways.
Municipal.
There's a large municipal building being built across the street from my office in a residential district.
That's not municipal, it's quasi, it's a utility, quasi-public.
Ah, I think that parcel may actually be commercial. No?
No, it's limited business for the first section and residence in the back.
That's what it is, yeah.
Yeah, so, I just-
If we're going to make a solar overlay district, I'd like to really talk about what that solar overlay district should be.
And I mean, that could also be altered. That's something that would, would be permissible in this.
Right. So I would like to put down for discussion is, what, what should the solar overlay district look like?
All right. Any more questions or comments on solar?
Again, I, I think we've got to have Greg here, but I would be interested, Adam, on seeing, because I, we've seen already the issues with the screening.
Mm-hmm.
So I do think it would make sense to have some examples of what other towns have done, or your thoughts on screening.
Okay.
And I tend to agree with you about the lot size should, should define the size of the system. But I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that.
I kind of like the idea of, of doing it by percentage of lot size.
Yeah, me too.
And then working it back from what we kind of think it should be on a total. But, I mean, then it all depends if, if we decide that there's a different-
And you can scale it by district at that point, you know. Maybe residential is 15, maybe industrial is 50.
Yep. And it also depends on if we keep the existing breakdown of 20 acres between a 10 KW and a six megawatt.
Mm-hmm.
Which seems a little bit strange, too, but discussion to be had.
My only thought is to try to keep it as neat as possible, and thinking of all the different constraints a property owner may face, you know, depending on how much frontage they have, wetlands on the property, topography. I just, my concern would be if we start doing a percentage thing, you may get one project that meets the percentage requirement, but it's just a horrible use of the lot versus another project that doesn't quite meet the criteria but would make a lot more sense.
The horibility of the use is dependent upon the lot's owner. Right?
Correct, but I'm just, it, I feel like the 20 acre minimum rules out a lot of parcels by itself, as well as the setbacks, because you start looking at 200 feet from every lot line.
I can't tell you the number of people I've told to go find a different lot, because, oh, I want to do this here. I said, well, you're going to put about six panels in once you, once you do it.
Yeah. And I would also recommend we exclude wetlands, make it a percentage of uplands existing on the lot. Just in case, you know, you've got a, a non-buildable lot because of lack of uplands. And then they say, well, we've got all this size.
Mm-hmm.
Anyways. I would, I would like to ask, Adam, that you reach out to whoever you need to, be it Unitil-
Yeah, I, I have a-
And find out exactly what their limitations are on roof mount systems.
Okay.
I believe, I mean, we've heard anywhere from 10 to 12 and a half KW on a roof. I mean, I've heard, I've heard a limitation of 12 and a half from an installer who came to our property to talk about it. And I think that we've had discussions here about a limitation of 10 KW?
Well, I think a lot of that boils down to AC versus DC and-
So we need to find out single phase versus three phase?
Which I don't know of many, well, technically, the, I guess anybody along 2A couldn't bring three phase. And I mean, if you've got three phase at the street, you could theoretically bring it into your house, which most people wouldn't do, but-
But if you're putting in a system like that, it might be worth it to someone.
Then it raises your limit and so on, but as you stated earlier, Adam, I wouldn't be opposed to providing more opportunities through our regulations, and then if Unitil stops-
Again, I think that-
For whatever reason, then so be it. At least we've provided the opportunity. I think that also is going to hold true with larger projects in general, because my understanding is that Unitil doesn't have any more space for large-scale solar as it is. And in their network, I mean, there's other communities, Pittsburgh, Ashby, Ashburnham, that are all feeding into that. So as you see more and more large-scale solar going in, and Pittsburgh, that's a project that won't be in Unitil as a result, so.
All right. Can we move on to minutes approval?
Sure.
All right. Has everybody had an opportunity to review them?
Yes.
I can't vote on the 23rd, so, since I wasn't here.
We don't need to vote anymore, do we?
You, you need to vote.
But you don't need to have been there.
You don't have to have been there to vote.
Oh, I don't?
No.
Really?
It's, yes.
How can I vote on, to approve minutes when I wasn't part of the discussion?
It's new news.
It's my understanding of it, because how do you vote on minutes when the board turns over, too?
Okay. All right. If you think I can, I will.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from September 23, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from Sept- September 23, 2019, the Unitil hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All set with the first, as well?
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for October 1, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And while we're all agreeable, did anybody have an issue with the Unitil decision that I sent out?
Oh, I didn't read that. Crap.
I just looked for the trees and was happy with that, so. Eight trees.
No, I mean, I was, I was super pleased about the, the outcome.
So it's just you signing for the board?
And this is just the minutes, right?
Well, no, this is the, that's the decision. I mean, there's a fair amount of the minutes in there, just based on the amount of discussion that was had.
Okay.
And then there's the motion for the eight trees with the replacement of one-to-one and the regular pruning along the remainder of the roadway.
Oh, yeah. The minutes are kind of dispersed throughout.
Yep.
Cool.
Got to turn it the other way. No, it's here.
Just one?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Moving on to committee reports. None of the three committees that I'm on met, so capital planning has not met stormwater task force, nor agricultural commission has met. We have had a couple of farmers' markets since. We had our record low number of vendors. Two Sundays ago, we had only 15 vendors, which is still more than twice as many as we ever had. Almost ever had. And we had 17 yesterday. We have one more farmer's market, and we're looking to end out the year with a bang. That would be great. I believe we could have some entertainment lined up. And that's it for AgCom. Open space?
Greg's not here, but I just want to let you know that we're meeting next Tuesday. Couple of things that might interest the planning board. 250 Howard Street is withdrawing from chapter. That's a 15.22 acre parcel, so that's on our agenda. The proposed use is for single-family residents. We have the Pierce Tree Farm APR, the Saliba property acquisition, and the land acquisition committee is meeting with the selectmen tomorrow. There's a number of things that the state has asked us to review in the plan and update in the open space plan, so we'll be working on that next week. And there's one item on the agenda that I wasn't able to open the attachment, so I don't know if Adam can fill us in. What is 361 Mass Ave? Do you know what that's about?
361 Mass Ave?
It says that there's an email thread attached, but I can't open it.
Nothing is coming to my-
So, I'll have to fill it, yeah.
I did see that.
Yeah, I'd have to fill you in after. I don't know what that's about.
And I read it, but I'm, I'm drawing a blank on it.
Yeah, yeah. So, and MRPC, they canceled this month, so.
Was it number 361?
361, yeah.
And just to follow up on that, we've received a resignation from the open space committee for Rich Brockelman. So we did post an ad looking for a member to take that spot. So potentially you'll see applications or requests for that in the, the future.
So, thank you for that. 361 Mass Ave is the, the other half of the Walmart farm.
Hmm. So I don't know why that's on the, I don't know.
It's been 11 years in planning.
I know, I know.
Walmart farm?
The other half.
It's the other half of the land of the LeBarney.
The bottom half of Highfield.
Yeah, yeah. Highfield.
I mean, it's been for sale forever.
Yeah, so I don't know what, why it's on our agenda. I'll let you know.
Interesting.
Unless it's been offered to the town similar to the Saliba property, but I'm not sure.
I doubt it. That's got the commercial piece on the front. That's not going to be offered, but they're not going to offer that to us.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know why it's on the agenda.
Okay, so, none of Tanner's committees have reported or meeting yet? And you've got just one?
A single committee.
My single committee.
It's not fully formed, so we haven't put it on here yet.
Okay, all right.
Okay, and then, so-
That's why it hasn't been formed yet.
What is it?
No, they, they still haven't appointed the citizens.
Oh, okay.
What is it?
The TCP building committee.
Oh, okay.
And we still got the open MJTC appointment?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So that rounds up our committee reports, I believe, right? I didn't leave anybody out?
All right. So Stone Farm. It's curious that about two weeks after we met the last time, I got an email from LaScatti Development, oh, we're going to have Powell out there middle of September to, to finish up that work.
Did they?
They did. Well, they finished the majority of it. There's one outstanding item. I was out there again this morning with Jeff Walsh from Graves Engineering. All of the major work within the living part of the subdivision was done to what was required. The shoulders of the access road need to be backed up with some sort of material, whether it's loam and seed, or some sort of dense crushed stone. But that's a relatively minor issue. I have reached out to LaScatti, asked him to, identified what the, the missing, missing item was and asked him to, to move forward with that.
And when did you reach out to him?
This afternoon.
Okay.
I mean, I, it was this morning when we were out there, so.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't the middle of September.
Yeah, no.
If he hasn't responded.
No.
Okay.
It was this afternoon. I expect that they'll be responding in, in due course. And, you know, I would, I think we have seven days until we've given him seven, seven more days to finish it. I would look for the board to potentially give him to the end of the month based on the work to finish it. I don't know that he'll be able to schedule someone out there in the next seven days. And in reality, it would take us a week or two to ramp up to claiming the bond for that small piece of work anyway. We've gotten the response that we've asked for, and I think that this would be, you know, our show of reasonableness in that he's completed the work.
Well, frankly, I'm not worried about a show of reasonableness, because it's not reasonable that we had to wait this long for him to do this work.
I understand that.
So, so I want to understand what you're asking us to do. We had voted to move forward with acquiring the bond. We had to notify him we were going to do that.
Correct.
So now we can't acquire the full bond amount, obviously, because he's done a lot of the work.
Correct. It would be, it would just be the work to be done on-
So what would we have to do procedurally? I don't know how we're granting an extension, or I don't know how-
I would have to talk to town council about that. And in reality, what would happen is even if we moved forward, and I guess we probably don't need an extension, even if we moved forward with claiming it, if he finished the work, then going forward claiming it, there, there'd be nothing to claim.
Well, I mean, to Paula's point, we have already moved forward to claim it.
Correct.
So we do need to have that discussion with council.
And if he is able to finish it in the couple weeks it's going to take us to move forward, then great. But if he hasn't, then we can. I don't, I'm not worried about, you know, trying to give him more time, quite, because quite frankly, he's had plenty of time.
MJTC, we still don't have a board-appointed representative for MJTC.
This one of you two wants to volunteer, we should probably kick that down to the next meeting, too.
I'm not doing it.
Ti-ting, ti-ting, ti-ting.
We, the selectmen, in discussing earth removal the last time I was at their meeting, which was last week, asked whether we wanted the entire article printed in the warrant, or whether they wanted, whether the board would want the article to be at the town offices and referenced in the warrant. The warrant as it is, in draft form with the bylaw printed, was, I think, 11 pages. I indicated it wasn't up to me. It was up to the town manager and the board of selectmen, and a member of the board of selectmen requested that I inquire with you. So thus I inquire.
I'm personally, I mean, I don't usually, I'm, I'm in favor of making it available in town office and not mailing eight additional pages.
Yeah, I think if we can make it available at town offices and maybe put it on the website.
Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll put it on the website.
That's fine with me.
Excellent. We are unanimous on that.
That's, and the rest is the, the bylaws that we've talked about. The solar and, I mean, the board made a decision back over the summer to put the parking on hold until the earth removal and the solar were done or in process, and we can talk about that as we go forward through the winter.
Sounds good. So, meeting schedules? October 28th?
That's right.
We-
Nothing else?
Okay. I don't see that we've got anything on, for the next meeting, at the 28th?
We don't, other than the stuff that we've kicked down the road. I think we have a few A&amp;Rs that have come in, but nothing public hearing-y.
Well, that'd give us a good opportunity to have hopefully a full, full board again, and get some real discussion going on the solar.
Mm-hmm.
And whatever else we can-
Nope. Sorry, I, I had a thought that I had forgotten about. The, and I can get onto, under ongoing items.
Well, no, if you've, you got something for the 28th?
No, no, no. I have something to tell you this evening, but I'll wait till ongoing items.
Okay. So we've got the special town meeting on the 12th, and we are not going to schedule a get-together before that?
That's up to you.
So, historically, we've scheduled a half hour before, and if there's nothing comes up, we don't need to meet. comes up, we don't need to meet, but we have posted, and if we need to, we can.
That's fine.
Did I, did I represent that correctly?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay. And then November 25th, I see nothing for us.
That's correct, that's a ways off in the future.
Oh, oh, so another interesting thing, I forgot, it was, it was a Tuesday evening, so.
Town meeting is a Tuesday evening.
Tuesday evening, and scheduled to begin at 7, so that would be a planning board meeting at 6:30 if the need arises.
Right.
Okay, and so, we've got a blank slate for the 25th as well, which gives us plenty of good opportunity to discuss some bylaws, ongoing items?
So, we were informed that we did not receive the planning assistance grant for the master plan.
Okay.
It was a competitive round, and as I said, prior to application, it's not that master planning is not allowed to be funded through that, it's just something that they reserve for whatever funding they have left over, they like to see regulatory change, and interestingly, they, they talk about forward-moving and adaptive stuff, but master planning doesn't necessarily rise to the, the high level of that, so, something the board will want to consider in the near future is whether or not to hold off on putting the RFP together and request the remaining funds in a second year of capital, this coming town meeting, and put out one large RFP, or try and do it in two small chunks, I would, yeah, well, it would, if the board wants to do the whole thing and wants to spend the time doing that, I think you will get a better price doing it as one whole pitch, as opposed to doing half of it and going back and doing the other half, but I guess it all depends on what the board wants to, to do with that, and how they want to do it.
Yeah, so we need to talk about that.
Correct.
Like, around the 28th or the 25th.
So, how many elements were there? There's eight?
Nine.
Nine? Okay, and then most recently, we had economic development done by MRPC that we didn't choose to accept? We had something done by MRPC.
That was economic development.
And then we've done, and we're, we're looking at forming an economic development committee.
Correct.
So that would be one that we would not, we would want on the back burner, as far as I can tell, and we also did a housing production plan recently.
Correct.
And that corresponds to?
That corresponds with the housing element.
Okay, so there's two out of eight or nine, so I don't see why we, we wouldn't want to identify three or four to send out for RFP.
And again, I think that that's a discussion that the board should have and think about, and.
So, when, when is the last time that you emailed us out the, the list and the descriptions of the elements? Do you remember?
Month or two ago, maybe?
Month or two? Okay, can you be sure to supplement that with the greeting material for Marissa?
She has a copy of the master plan.
Okay, does she have a copy of the?
Uh, no, I can get it to her, though.
Okay, that would be great.
I'll just send it to everybody.
Yeah, I mean, simply in an effort not to have, continue to reprint things. Are there other potential grants that would address master planning?
That one will come back around next year.
Okay. All right, so I guess that leaves us with no audience and public comment, so apparently there's none of that, board comment or concerns?
Uh-uh.
None from me, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved?
Second.
Any discussion about adjourning? All in favor?
Nice.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.